Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 20th, 2023 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have you with us tonight. At this time, Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Paris?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
We will now move on to item number 4A, approval of minutes of the August 16th, 2023 regular meeting of the City Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Paris. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. This time, we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will read them at this time.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're going to add to item 8E, the City Manager's Office Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Distribution, $1,000 to the Harold V. Lucas Foundation, Inc., from Commissioner Henry. And we're adding item 8F, the City Attorney's Office First Amendment to the Attorney Retainer Agreement for Michael Kahn. That concludes those.
Sorry, Mr. Fietrich, there was supposed to be an additional item for the Commission to approve the inter-local agreement that the CRA also approved tonight.
We'll add that to the agenda.
We'll add that as, yeah, as well.
Okay.
And it's the same exact agreement that was in the CRA agenda. It's just the Commission also has to approve it. And we have to add that at the administrative side because it has to be approved by the ordinance.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? All right.
Motion to approve this agenda with the said changes.
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We're going to move on to our presentations. Our first presentation, item 6A is a proclamation for National Black Business Month presented by Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Yeah, I need it because I can't see that far. All right, wonderful. All right, yes, sir. Absolutely. Okay. In recognition of National Black Business Month, whereas National Black Business Month is celebrated annually in the month of August, and whereas this annual commemoration dates back to 2004, when Frederick Jordan, an engineer and entrepreneur, and John Williams Templeton, an author and historian, created the celebration. The intention was to highlight and empower black business owners everywhere, especially given the unique challenges faced by minority business owners. This stemmed from Mr. Jordan's own personal experience of the struggle to gain financial backing and funding when he began his own firm. And whereas, Black Business Month is a time to acknowledge and appreciate black-owned businesses across the nation and all that they represent in the country's continual striving for diversity and equality. And whereas, by commemorating National Black Business Month, the city of Daytona Beach reaffirms its commitment to fostering an inclusive environment that values diversity, encourages economic empowerment, and works towards eradicating inequities. And whereas, the African-American Entrepreneurs Association, in conjunction with the city of Daytona Beach, will host an event at the Jackie Robinson Ballpark and Museum to spotlight companies and provide resources to small business owners to encourage the community to celebrate and support black-owned businesses beyond this month. Now, therefore, I, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim August 2023 as National Black Business Month in the city of Daytona Beach, and encourage all citizens to take part in celebrating the accomplishments of black-owned businesses and to actively support their growth and development. Thank you, and I will allow Mr. Giscum to have a few remarks along with any sponsors that he may.
Yeah, can I have my corporate partners come up in front here and supporters, please? I know you guys waited patiently. Sorry about that.
Okay, well, we're not used to having that. We'll start, take one this way, and the manager, they'll take one that way. Okay.
We're going to move on to our second presentation, item 6B, Public Works Department, September 2023 Beautification Award winner.
Mayor, can I just say something? I want to acknowledge Cyrus Callen, and it's a long title, so I'm going to read that. Director of Aviation and Economic Resources for the International Airport is here tonight. I'd like to recognize him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a member of the beautification board to present.
Good evening. I'm Marty Grimshaw, and I live at four Granville Circle. Mayor Henry, members of the City Commission, and Mr. Fietrich. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected Halifax Health Medical Center at 303 North Clyde Morris Boulevard as our commercial beautification award winner for the month of September 2023. The award winner opened its doors to the community on January 3rd, 1928. Founded by the state legislature, the hospital began operations with 125 licensed beds. During World War II, the hospital became a convalescence facility. In 1947, it was remodeled and returned to the community as an acute care general hospital. In 1985, the hospital was designated as the area's only Level 2 trauma center and changed its name to the Halifax Medical Center. In 2007, Halifax Health Medical Center of Port Orange opened to provide access to residents on the south side of Volusia County. The France Tower was completed in 2009, at which time many additional services were provided. And the Halifax Health Medical Center of Deltona opened in 2020 to round out the three hospital system of care. The beautification that is accomplished on these properties, our types of trees, our shrubs and plants used, crepe myrtle, oak trees, elm trees, palm trees, magnolia trees, gardenias shrubs, dwarf exora, pentas, marigolds, blue days, Indian hawthorn, hibiscus, the custom trees and bushes, chephalera, cordilline, and variegated loriopy, and it's a beautiful location. The Halifax Health Medical Center would like to recognize the team that made this possible. The grounds coordinator, Frank Anastasi, the grounds keeper, Nicholas Weathers, and grounds keepers, Joe Maples. Are they here tonight? Mayor Derrick Henry will present the award.
We are fortunate in Daytona Beach to have a world-class medical center, and Halifax means a lot to Daytona Beach, always has. But we are also appreciative as a community to have such pristine property and maintain with such professionalism, and it distinguishes the Clyde Morris ISB corridor in a magnificent way. So, certificate of achievement, may it be known that this certificate has been presented to Halifax Health Medical Center for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor Paula R. Reed, City Commission, Zone 6. Yes, you did.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. That's my bad. It's okay.
He's going to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Henry, the latest Chad Metchinsey, he is the new head of your fiscal operations. But I am just trying to call up my words. He came to work this morning at 4:00, so this is just about his bedtime. We're going to let him go with our thanks.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number seven. This is our citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. And our first speaker is John Nicholson.
Really? No doubt.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I had four questions listed. I've since answered them from the staff. I have one left, and that was item F, the property on City Island that we're apparently supposed to transfer from the county. I look back at the documents. As you know, I was the one that was pushing for the children's park at that location, so I followed it very carefully. The documents show the property inside of the sidewalk, not outside of the sidewalk. So what I'm asking is if we do this and the promenade takes over, then we've lost one quarter of the island to the public, all right? There are people that ride their bicycles around the sidewalks on City Island. There are people that jog in the morning around City Island. They will no longer be able to do that. The police will no longer be able to drive that area to secure that area because generally the police officers will make that circle. They can't do that any longer because they're going to block the island where the park begins, the children's park, and they will block the island on the other side. So when I talked to him, they were going to put literally across if they're not, and we have the access around it, I don't have an objection, but if we are blocked and we can't use City Island any longer, there are other ways around it that they can secure their walkway. What they want to do is be able to close that walkway across the river and join it to another walkway that exists to Beach Street so it can be secured at night, locked up. I have no problem with that, but I don't like the idea of cordoning off a quarter of City Island. So if we can avoid blocking that entire corner and allow them to find a way to get around, but also both of us share that corner, is what I'm seeking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown. This is our final speaker.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Chris Ridge, Daytona Beach. Those of you who know me, in fact, I was already questioned when I first came to the City Hall earlier today, you are going to speak up on the vehicle purchases. Yeah, of course I am. A, of course, is another one where we're doing trucks. B, and I've preached this, I don't know how many times, we're paying almost $64,000 apiece for soon-to-be obsolete gas vehicles that are inferior to what's available for police vehicles with the Tesla vehicles. Again, I am truly disappointed that we're not taking that forward step. We can get better vehicles, and if you look at the total cost of ownership over the period of time that we use them, you will find that it's considerably cheaper to use electrical vehicles, not to mention we are a beach community, and we should be taking pride in our beach, and we should be taking care of our environment. So once again, I'm going to remind you that you're paying this kind of money, you could have been buying vehicles that have virtually no maintenance except for tires and charging, and instead you're spending on vehicles that are going to require a tremendous amount of maintenance over this period of time, not to mention the fuel that, once you burn, puts carbon in the air, and you never see that money ever again. Like John said, I am very concerned about how we're going to utilize the property on City Island, and so I hope you address his concerns as well. There has been a tendency for the city partner, we recall them, closing off some of the public lands, and I don't want to see that happen. I use the area. I'd like to still continue to have access to it, and so I'm hoping the city has a viable plan that we can all live with. On item 8P, once again, we have a single-source, it seems, construction firm that almost seems to get carte blanche payments on the repair work they do. And I look at some of these numbers in here, and I realize there are additional costs with city governments, but some of these numbers, to me, are outrageous. I know I was deeply concerned about, again, same firm that did the bathroom, same firm that did the Dickerson Center, that was eight months overdue, and I saw some of the things that went on during that construction project, and it just concerns me. And I, again, hope that the city will start writing some of their own contracts on this instead of relying on outside sources or outside vendors to write the contracts. I did that for many years and was very successful, a major theme park, and saved them a lot of money. But when you allow the outside vendors to control the costs of single-source bids, you're going to be paying with our money through the nose. Thank you.
That was our final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Have a motion from Commissioner Strickland, second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We will now move on to our public hearings. Item 9A, City Manager's Office Budget Division FY 2023, 24, Property Taxes and Budget for the city of Daytona Beach. This is a resolution public hearing. Okay, we have a speakers on item 9A. We have Frederick, who's going to begin.
Sorry, this new podium is huge. Fred Colter, Budget Officer. We are doing our normal yearly adoption of the millage rate and of the budget. I'm supposed to tell you certain things when reviewing this. First, we're looking at a millage rate of 5.4300 for the general fund and a debt service rate of 0.1749. The general fund is an 11.18% increase over the rollback rate of 4.8838. The difference in revenues between the rollback rate and the amount that's in the proposed budget is $4,411,011, which is substantially less than the amount of personal services in the general fund, the increase in those. That's why we need the increase. That's all I have to say.
Okay, our first speaker is John Nicholson. And on deck is, that's our only speaker, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. For the last 30 years, I've been coming and pushing the idea that rollback is not a good idea. We did seven years of rollback under Bud Asher, and it caught us into a crunch. We raised taxes 27%, and I don't ever want to do that again. And Mr. Fietrich said, I promise you that he will look at it and no rollback. So I'm extremely happy with what he's accomplished this year. I have no, I didn't look through the budget because I'm confident that what he's doing with the cash that we have, roads, parks, you name it, yes, not every park, not every road, Mayor, but they are being done, and they weren't done in the past. So again, I want to thank you for not having a rollback.
That was our final speaker.
All right. Do we have any comments from the commission? You're one of the strangest elected people I've ever seen. You guys don't say anything when the budget comes, nothing. We have a different city because only one person came and spoke regarding the budget. I have one question, Mr. Manager. How much did we increase, John, you might have to, I mean, Fred, you might have to help us. How much did we increase the road resurfacing by?
When we initially set it up at your direction a couple of years ago, it was $4 million. Then last year, we bumped it up $100,000, and this year, we bumped it up another $100,000.
And how much, what percentage of that, of the overall budget, have we increased it by? Because that's really the objective.
You ask hard questions. When I was younger, I could do that math in my head. It's not one I'm prepared, but that is a small piece of the total increase.
Okay. Well, being able to do the things that we've been able to do in this city is important, and that's clearly why this commission is obviously on board with this budget. We have been able to do some, some things that frankly I didn't think we'd be able to do 10 years ago. In fact, I thought it would be impossible 12 years ago. So I'm pleased with that, and I respect what we would like to do. But of the things that we've accomplished, one of the most important is the number of roads that we have resurfaced. We need a sidewalk on Clyde Morris. I don't know if that's our responsibility, but Clyde Morris from the new apartment complex to LPGA is dangerous because you have a lot of residents who live there who don't have car transportation, so they're walking. I don't know how much that sidewalk's going to cost, but each day that I ride by and I see folks walking that road, it reminds me of how much need we have. So I have only one question, and I'll be supportive. If not, I'm going to pull in another direction. We, $100,000 is not consistent with the amount of increase that we've increased the budget by, right?
Yes.
Mr. Manager, can we make the increase congruent with, congruent with the amount that we are, what I'm asking is can we increase the road resurfacing and sidewalks by the amount that the budget is, which should be over $100,000?
At this juncture, we could not probably do those numbers. However, we could go back and evaluate after the budget is approved and bring back a budget amendment that can try to get us to where we are, but at this time, trying to pull those numbers during this meeting?
I'm not asking to pull the numbers now because, because we could say, which is what I normally say, that our goal, we got two goals here in Daytona Beach. One is to do a lot of things and to correct a lot of things that we haven't corrected, but also we want to lower our millage rate to get, become closer to our neighboring cities, which we've been steadily doing that. No, my objective is, you don't have to do the numbers tonight. I'm asking, can you give me the commitment that you can do that?
I will.
Okay.
My commitment would be that to have staff look at those and present something to you all that moves the numbers up more than just $100,000 a year.
That's not good enough.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
At the middle of the year, we usually true up the budget. We look at how much money actually rolls forward instead of my estimate, and there's a good chance that the number will be higher than my estimate because I'm pretty conservative. And we could sit there and take that number and program a lot of it toward your desires.
Well, maybe I should have had this conversation before tonight.
Your colleague said, they're nodding over there.
It's okay, but this was, that long list when we met, that was on the list. It was that it would be congruent with the, the increase would be congruent with the increase of the budget. Okay.
I do know that, that is the basic number, but there are other funds within the public works budget that are assigned also to other transportation needs.
Okay. So I can't wait till half the year. You guys go back and look at it and come back and tell us at the end of the month how much you can increase it by, because all of us would agree, it's elected. I don't think any of you would disagree that there's almost nothing that the residents are appreciating anymore than knowing that their roads are being resurfaced. And for that not to be reflected in the budget, that increase, that should be something that we do. Okay? That should be something that we do. So you guys go back and, you know, find some sort of way to tighten it down and figure a way to find some money. I think it should be at least another $250,000, but that's me, okay?
How many extra?
You can do that, right?
How many extra miles of road does that get us or sidewalks? It's not much.
Not much.
It don't matter what it gets. The objective is that we're, we've made a commitment to the community that says that we're going to consistently increase. And I was here when we didn't have but $2 million. Okay? That's half of what we got now, and people were complaining. So it's our job to demand what we want of the staff. And now if you don't agree with me and you're all okay with keeping it that, then I'll be quiet. But otherwise, he says he thinks he can do that. Okay? Not a problem, right?
I thought you were going to say 2.5.
No. $250,000, right? That's four point, that's okay. We all in agreement? Any other questions or comments? Okay, you all real nice, Commission. Okay, all right, we have a motion?
No. No, I'm gonna read the title.
All right, read the title.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution public hearing, a resolution determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation and making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 5.4300 per 1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the City of Daytona Beach for fiscal, fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024, which represents a 11.18% tax rate increase from the rollback rate of 4.8838 and the voted debt service millage of 0.1749 and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have one motion from Christopher Strickland and a second from Commissioner May. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
We're gonna move on to 9A3. It's a resolution public hearing, and we have no speakers. This is a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024 for the City of Daytona Beach, describing the net sources of revenue in the estimated amount of 343,276,836, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of 343,276,343, 276,836, of which operating expenditures total 256,800,895,251 dollars. Transfers of 62,557,687 dollars and capital expenditures of 23,823,898 dollars and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, a second from Commissioner May. No questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
So we're gonna move on to the City Manager's Office, Budget Division, Fiscal Year 2023, 24 Property Taxes, Budget for the Daytona Beach Downtown.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9C, Finance Department, Midtown CRA Bank Loan, Series 2023. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing issuance by the City of Daytona Beach Community Redevelopment Agency of its redevelopment revenue note, Series 2023, in an amount not exceeding 6.5 million, secured by a lien on amounts deposited into the agency's redevelopment trust fund for purposes of financing the costs associated with certain redevelopment projects undertaken in accordance with the agency's redevelopment plan, authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement with the agency providing for covenant by the city to budget an appropriate non-advalorem revenues in the event of a shortfall of amounts of such, in such trust, trust fund and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
And we have no speakers.
No speakers? All right, a motion and a second, no comments from Commission? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9D. It's the Growth Management and Planning Department, First Amendment to the Caris Cold Storage PD, rezoning. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Caris Plan District Agreement to modify parking for industrial uses, memorialize existing billboards on the property, increase permitted wall signage standards, allow for electronic message center signs, and permit the removal of an additional historic tree, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Strickland and a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I do have a speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor, John Nicholson.
Nicholson, John Nicholson canceled.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our administrative items. Item 10A is the Growth Management and Planning Department, Fence Height, Land Development Code Text Amendment. This is an introduction of ordinance on first reading, an ordinance amending Article 6, Section 6.8 of the Land Development Code to increase the maximum height of fences in the side and rear yard from six foot to eight foot, repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. And do we have any questions or comments from the Commission?
Moved.
Okay, the public hearing and final action will be held on October 4, 2023. We're gonna move on to item 10B. It's the Growth Management and Planning Department, Volusia Square, Plan Development General, PDG, rezoning. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 22.4 plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of West International Speedway Boulevard on a portion of the block founded by Thames Road to the southwest and South Williamson Boulevard to the northeast, from BR2 Business Retail 2 to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Volusia Square Plan District Agreement to allow additional uses, upgrade landscaping, subdivide the property, and incorporate a uniform signed plan to support redevelopment of the Volusia Square Shopping Center, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. And do we have any questions or comments from the Commission? The public, public hearing and final action will be on October 4, 2023. We're gonna move on to item 10C, City Manager's Office, City of Daytona Beach Proposed 2024 Legislative Priorities Resolution, approving the proposed list of state and federal priorities. And we have Hardy Smith to present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. Hardy Smith, Government Relations Administrator for the city. Tonight, you have before you part of our annual exercise of the state and federal level legislative cycle, list of priorities, the suggested priorities here for your consideration tonight, and then subsequently taking a final action on. Probably looks extremely familiar. We're fairly consistent, you have been very consistent on the issues and priorities you've communicated over the last several years. So we have carried forward the list that you have identified previously as priorities, also paid attention to the community surveys, community outreach meetings the city has had over the last several months, also paid attention to your strategic planning session and also your budgeting session workshops. So all of those comments have, and all of that insight, as well as staff input, is all incorporated into this draft list tonight. So my purpose here is to see, tonight is to see if you have any questions, suggestions, anything you'd like to see added to the list, and I'm here to listen and take notes. Answer questions.
I didn't have anything. Did you have anything? I thought it was a great list.
Yeah, it's a great list. I just wanted to make sure that we are gonna be watching Senate Bill 102, the Live Local Act.
Yes.
And I, because I was in a meeting recently with the DeBarry manager and one of their council, well, actually, the mayor, and I guess it's happening in DeBarry.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I guess they're fighting back hard.
Yes, the Live Local Act, if you're not familiar with it, and that is, that is on the list, last legislative session, Live Local Act was a priority of the Senate President. It was, I think, probably introduced and passed maybe within literally the first few days of the legislative session, very unusual, but there were, there was big celebration around the Live Local Act, because it was all about, at least in the headlines, all about affordable and workforce housing. And so there was a big celebration until especially local government started paying attention to what it actually said. And so, you know, we all want affordable housing, we all want affordable housing, workforce housing, but the bottom line is, somebody's gonna pay for it somewhere or other. And so in that bill, essentially, if local communities want, it's one of the challenges, one of the challenges, there's several other challenges with the bill, but if local communities want affordable housing, workforce housing, then this legislation has a good bit of language around it's up to the city, either through incentives or not being allowed to pay, charge impact fees. So with the bottom line is, it's flipped the narrative. You haven't gotten any, any housing for free. It's up to you to pay for it. And/or offering incentives to developers that you might not have wanted, and that's the situation, as I understand it, in DeBarry.
We actually lose home rule. We have no say in what goes on.
Yes, yes. So there, there will be, the League of Cities won't have their list of legislative priorities out until closer to session. I've checked with them about that. I feel sure this will be an item on their radar. And it sounds like from the legislative delegation meeting I was in the other night with the manager, it sounds like it's very much on the, on the radar of the local legislative delegation.
So each year, we go through this, and so what percentage of our goals do we meet with each rendering of this?
That's a, that's a really good question. There is so much in the legislative process, it, it, it's about, you know, out of the several thousands of bills that get introduced, only a few hundred actually make it. So in the legislative process, it's actually offense and defense. You're trying to win, and at the same time, you're trying not to have any damage done to you. So it's our efforts with other cities and, and working with our team in Tallahassee. We were successful last year in stopping legislation that would have been extremely harmful to the City of Daytona Beach. Some of these things don't, they're in your legislative reports, but they don't get big headlines. There were some significant issues that had to do with, for example, one in particular, a waste hauling regulatory bill in, that would have affected the City of Daytona Beach significantly in a financial way. We were involved in helping make sure that bill didn't move. Not a big headline grabber, except there was some excitement around City Hall about it. So there, those kind of things, and, and there's so many of these, if you can, if you can just kind of delay them a little bit, you know, so you're not winning, you're not losing, but if they haven't passed, you know, an onerous piece of legislation hasn't passed, well, it hadn't happened yet. So you keep trying to, to push it, maybe hopefully try to improve it. That's what the League of Cities does a lot of, try to improve bills. A good example would be short-term rentals. That's gonna be back. Our lobbyist says, just get ready, it's gonna come. They've got a very strong, the proponents of zero regulations on short-term rentals are, is a very, very strong lobby. It'll be back, but we've been involved in helping, you know, make sure we don't lose home rule again. That's another one of those situations, and the League of Cities has fought that as well. So some of these, it's kind of a hard answer to, to try to quantify. Last year, as far as like winning and losing, we were not successful in our, in, in one of our two appropriations requests. So one, we did not get, that we're gonna go back for again this year. One, we did get, and that was funding for a water line that's gonna produce significant economic benefit, new tax revenues benefit for the City of Daytona Beach. That was a top priority on appropriations request last year, so it, and a lot of these, it's a long game. It's a long game. It's a, it is a marathon, and so you just keep perseverance, 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 staying with it. Does that help some? Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Hardy.
Thank you.
We do have a speaker on the side of Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. I understand that you guys don't want to deal with this, but the sales tax, we lose over 100 million dollars a year in sales tax because we didn't have a population. It's a lot of money, and I understand the state does it, but if you never ask, you'll never get. So if you think about it, I've been here 40 years, at 100,000 dollars a year for 40 years, you're in the billions of dollars. And we, we're talking about 250,000 dollars for roads, with 100 million dollars, you could do an awful lot, or 125 million, or 150 million. So at least ask to look at it, because it's not, it's several counties that have the same problem, and we may get partners to help us, because we are absolutely losing. We have actually 10 million people that come through our city, and we're only accounted for 65,000 of them. It'll go up, because now we're, we've increased, but even that is, it's, 81,000 doesn't compare with 110 million. So we are losing every time we need to put a road in, a sidewalk in, or whatever. We've lost that money, because the money that we raise in taxes, when they come into our city and they buy things and pay hotel rooms and whatever, we raise that money here, and it goes to Deltona, it goes to the land, it goes to Port Orange. We need it here, so at least ask for it. Secondly, school board. We need to, to support the school board. They're getting shafted. We have a beach, yeah. It doesn't mean that we can afford to pay our teachers, to pay for schools and all that other stuff. It's a problem. We need to ask for help. We're not a wealthy city. Every bit of amount helps. And lastly, South Florida and several other locations get beach renourishment. We have plenty of sand off the beach. We should at least get in line so that when we need it, if we need it, we're in line to get that sand to renourish our beach for our tourism. Thank you.
That was our final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all right. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, got a resolution. All those in favor, we had a motion, right, and a second, who was it? I forgot. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10D. It's Growth Management and Planning Department, Letter of Inquiry for the nomination of Jackie Robinson Ballpark as a National Historic Landmark. This is a resolution. A resolution approving transmission of a letter of inquiry for nomination of Jackie Robinson Ballpark as a National Historic Landmark and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
A motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have two speakers, Mr. Mayor, on this item.
All right.
John Nicholson. First up and on deck is Tracy Remark.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. One quick question. What will this do, if anything, to the 30 million dollars for the renovation of Jackie Robinson Ballpark? We don't want to do something that's gonna foul something else in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Tracy Remark, 815 North Oleander Avenue. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream that one day his children would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. We know Jackie Robinson for both. March 17, 1946, on a ball field one block east of here, Jackie Robinson, a man with black skin, stepped up to bat wearing the uniform of the Montreal Royals, the minor league team controlled by Major League's Brooklyn Dodgers. And stepping onto that field, Jackie blasted through the line of segregation that had been in place in Major League Baseball since 1887. Just like hitting a home run over the centerfield fence in a ballpark, the farthest distance Just like hitting a home run over the centerfield fence in a ballpark, the farthest distance with the most impact that garners the highest admiration. The rest is history and what a history he had. But it is by the life he lived both on and off the baseball field that we know the character of Jackie Robinson. He was known for saying that a life is important in the impact it has on the lives of others. Not only did he live in a way that greatly impacted others for good, he memorialized that belief on his tombstone. The life that impacted Jackie Robinson, the model for how he lived his, was that of Jesus Christ. Jackie had a practice he followed. He spent time kneeling in prayer every night. About that practice, he said something we rarely hear when people express accolades about his life. Jackie said, "Kneeling to pray is the best way I know to get closer to the Lord and to a hard-hit ground ball." It is prayer that shaped the character of Jackie Robinson by keeping him close to his Savior, Jesus Christ. And it is in the life of this devout man that we are witness to the living out of the Lord's promise to all of us when we face what appear to be insurmountable barriers and hardships. From Isaiah, chapter 40, "The Lord is an everlasting God. The Creator of the ends of the earth, he gives power to the faint and strengthens the powerless. Those who wait on the Lord shall renew their strength; they shall rise up like wings of eagles. They shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not be faint." Jackie Robinson often attested it was his faith in the Lord that carried him through the torment, the threats, and the abuse he faced in integrating baseball. Faith was the heart of Jackie's character. He walked the walk that led to this moment here before you. My prayer is that his walk continue with your vote of yes for this resolution. Thank you.
Amen.
That was our final speaker.
Uh, it was well said. Okay, what are the drawbacks to this, uh, resolution?
Hi, Doug, it's yours, planning manager. The, we don't see a drawback to this. It should not affect the, uh, the grant for the stadium. It's really the place and the person that's being honored with this national landmark. It's a longer process, too. It, this is just the first step. And then we have, if, if the National Park Service approves the nomination, then we have to present the documentation and everything to prove that. So they say it's a three to five-year project, uh, process. We're gonna try to get it done less time in time for the 80th anniversary. That is the 80th, right? Yep. 80th anniversary Jackie Robinson, so that's in 2026, 2026.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and we have an opportunity. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. Ms. Remark?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, we spoke, uh, maybe six months ago, you called me. And, um, some things, uh, you know, are big moments. And this is a step in the direction to, um, what could be a, another milestone moment. There are a lot of good reasons to visit Daytona Beach, a lot of good reasons. And this is right at the top of the list. So, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10E. It's Growth Management and Planning Department Temporary Event Parking Associated with Bike Toberfest 2023 Activities. This is a resolution. A resolution authorizing temporary event parking on various properties during Bike Toberfest 2023, establishing conditions and providing an effective date. And I do have one speaker on the side of Mr. Mayor.
Who's the one speaker? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was just waiting on you to call.
Oh, Mark Janetta? Mark Janetta? Sorry, I'm not sure of pronunciation on that.
I was looking around, looking for him. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Mark Janett and I live at 109 South Wild Olive. And we put in an application for Bike Week and we were told that since we got in late that we'd have to come to this meeting in case you guys had any questions for us before, to approve the application.
Which church?
Uh, Community United Methodist Church.
And I'll just really briefly, what took place is that the churches, um, that did temporary parking in certain areas, they would go through the special, uh, the Parks and Rec Board, and we are changing that process that they all go through the master plan, but that did not make it to all of the churches this year. So that's why these are on the, on the bill right now. But these are groups that have had parking in the past and most of them are churches. And that's why we said, we knew you would have to, you would approve it, but we had to bring it to your attention.
Do we have any questions?
For the manager, do we have any of the, uh, parking violators from the past trying to sneak in on this?
I don't know about anybody's trying to sneak in, but the churches that are under the, the, um, temporary parking are Community United Methodist Church, Greater New Zion Baptist Church, and Christ Church of Port Orange, Inc., which is First Presbyterian Church of Daytona.
Okay.
So by February, March, will this be cleared up?
We, we hope it will be cleared up, but I don't think that, especially the groups that have been doing it for 20 or 30 years, if, if there's a group that misses it, um, we'll probably bring them, um, to the same. I think that we should at least give about a year for individuals since the change took place in the last two months of knowing that they're not gonna go through the Parks and Rec, um, process. But we hope that everyone will be under one umbrella as you all have directed us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10F. Finance Department Midtown CRA Loan Inter, 2023 Interlocal Agreement. This is a resolution. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the agency, providing for a covenant by the city to budget and appropriate non-adverbal revenues in the event of a shortfall of amounts in such trust fund and providing an effective date.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Strickland and a second from Commissioner May.
And I have no speakers on this item.
And no speakers. All right, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
That was our final item on the administrative.
All right.
Items.
Did we add the one? We added it, right? That was it, that was it.
That was it.
Interlocal, yeah. Okay, uh, who was the first? Who, who would be the first speaker? Commissioner Ken too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna make, try to make this quick. It's been a long night. Um, I think everyone has this, um, the pictures of Seabreeze and Oak Ridge Bridges. Um, and can we have that put up on the screens for the public? Oh, there it is, okay. Um, this is a DOT bridge. Well, first of all, August 2nd, um, they had the DOT meeting regarding the plans for Mason Avenue for Phase One. And I think the PDE bid should start July 24th and the projects should start late summer or early, uh, fall, um, in 2024. And since we're doing Phase One and we are doing Phase Two, um, our bridge is DOT, but we are responsible for the aesthetics of this bridge. This bridge has not been painted for a long time. I know we have our budget already, um, in place, but I would like to see if the rest of the mayor and the commission is on board of having the manager look into some prices about putting this on the budget for next year. Because it only makes sense if we're getting Mason Avenue Phase One done, is we get our bridge done as well.
By, by done, do we mean clean? Is that what we're talking about?
No, it's already been pressure washed.
That's what I thought.
I'm talking about painting. And I think we have more pictures of the bridges as well. It's.
Yeah, I can't keep looking like that. That's a no-brainer.
Okay.
You gotta at least tell us how much it costs.
We are in agreement with that. Okay, and the next, next thing on the bridge, which I was told it shouldn't cost a whole lot, um, I don't think you have that. Yes, you do. I'd like to see some, um, LED lighting on the bridge. And what I was told, that these LED lights, um, we can change the colors during holidays, BCU games, um, if we can get a price on that as well.
Okay. Get a price, but we got, but we gotta remember now, we gotta get some, some, uh, we gotta get some lights on, uh, Main Street and so we can't, can't lose sight of that. Maybe we may have to have a.
Well.
Long-term plan on.
Can we have David Waller come up? Because I, he was saying there's already some kind of connection. I'll let him explain. Um, so hopefully. Thank you.
Two minutes. David Waller, Public Works Department. Um, we, we discussed, uh, the, the bridge a little bit. Um, yes, the, the bridge is owned by FDOT and generally speaking, FDOT does not paint bridges and they don't light bridges. So any improvements you want to do aesthetically would fall back to the city to fund the install and long-term maintenance. Um, we've done some of that work on, uh, ISB. We maintain the lighting that's there on the bridge and we maintain the paint that was done six or seven years ago. Um, and Seabreeze, what I suspect would be the same situation. We would need to fund the painting and any lighting upgrades that the commission wants. Um, the, the bridge on Seabreeze does appear to have been painted at some point, probably a construction, which is a little unusual for FDOT. Um, but, uh, any, yeah, any improvements would probably have to be a city function and the city maintained. Uh, lighting on Seabreeze, I've not looked into that. Um, you know, the lighting infrastructure on the ISB Bridge was built as part of the original bridge and it's very easy for us to maintain and have access to. Um, there's a maintenance tunnel, so to speak, under the bridge duct that our staff can work on the lights without needing scaffolds and hanging over from the side. It's all done from underneath. Um, I'm not familiar with the bridge structure on Seabreeze, but we'll look into it and get some options on different portions of painting of the bridge, whether it's just a top deck or the entire thing, and lighting options that may be something to be a priority for the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the other thing I had regarding Mason Avenue, um, when I went to the meeting and looked at the plans, there was a lot of residents there as well. It actually, Phase One looks pretty good. Um, but there was a few residents that had some concerns, which I think most of this, that these concerns should be addressed in Phase Two, except there was a FDOT representative there, um, and we have a lot of roads off Mason Avenue. And one of them was Colvax Drive, um, Bryanwood Drive, that they would like to see closed off on Phase One. Well, when I talked to the DOT representative, he said he didn't see a problem with it, but if we did Colvax Drive, he would like to see Oak, Oakwood Drive as well closed off and everybody should have this. Um, and he would like to see the city put that in for Phase One. So I wanted to see if we had support on this.
You say closed off like not have?
They can't.
Correct.
Cannot have access to, um, Mason.
Correct. There's a lot, and when you, when we do Phase Two, you're gonna see a lot of that closed off, a lot of those streets.
Have we spoken to the citizens that?
Thought I pushed it, I'm sorry. Have we spoken to the citizens that live on those streets?
No, that's why I'm bringing it in front of you guys. Um, that is, so you can talk to your residents. Um, Colvax Drive, um, Bryanwood Drive, and Oakwood Drive. And I did get, um, just recently, today actually, from the chief, um, the accident reports, um, there, and I haven't really had time to look at it. So I can have Letitia or them send it over to you guys and look at this one.
How long would they need to close up for?
Period.
For a period?
Yeah, period.
Forever.
Exactly.
So I'm gonna send that stuff to you. I have Letitia send it and just look at it. But when they do.
But you gotta remember why they wanna do it. It's really for safety. It, it really is for safety. It's not just because they just wanna close it off. The road is, they go so fast and when people pull out onto Mason on that road, they get run over and smashed. That's what it's for.
There's, Mason Avenue is a very dangerous road because of all the side roads. And I'm sure you're gonna see in Phase Two, a lot of these streets are gonna be blocked off. Cause there is a lot of streets.
Doesn't Colvax run from Hampton to Mason?
Colvax runs from Hampton.
To Mason.
Yes, runs all the way across. Colvax is the most challenging one. Because so many people use that as a.
Exactly.
Thoroughfare. The others, I don't know that it's that much traffic that comes off of.
Oh, it's not something you guys need to answer tonight, but send it over and I'll, I'll have Letitia send over the accident reports. And if everybody is in favor, then we'll have the city send it in to Public Works. I'm just bringing this up because I did have residents come to me and asked about Phase One and DOT did not have a problem with it, well, the DOT representative.
Okay.
But on Phase Two, we will have some say, but we will have the total say when they do start closing these streets off.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, um, the next thing, um, let's see. Oh, FDOT is inviting residents, um, regarding the PDE's, PDE study for LPGA from US 92 to Williamson Boulevard on Wednesday, October the 11th, at 5:30 at Daytona College News Journal Center at 221 North Beach Street. And there's something else I wanted to bring up, and you brought something up about Clyde Morris and LPGA, about sidewalks. I recently, well, you know, um, west of 95 on LPGA with DOT, um, their plans, they are going to probably put in bike paths on both sides. But the east of 95 on LPGA, I asked Public Works if they would look into it and put a map together of all the missing sidewalks after the development, and it wasn't as many as I thought. And I had talked to the county and they are willing to put in the missing sidewalks. There was only one, um, place on there that we need to require a easement for the county, which is a Salvation Arm, near the Salvation Army. And then also, it should be put on the priority list with the county because there is a nearby school, which I, this is all in your zone. So we are going to have sidewalks all the way down to LPGA. And you brought up Mayor, um, Clyde Morris and I believe those apartments, our land development code, they should have to put sidewalks, but we might wanna have, um, David and them put another map together to look to see where we're gonna have missing sidewalks there as well. And that would be, I believe, county, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Clyde Morris, he was talking about, and LPGA.
Yeah, Clyde Morris is a county, is a county section, but we can look at that as same as we did for the LPGA.
Okay.
And we are working to establish, the city's gonna work with Salvation Army to get the easement recorded and then the county, we'll share it with the county once it's done.
So we can work on a map for that area as well to see where we're gonna have missing sidewalks? Correct. Sound good? Oh, and also at the elected roundtable, there was some actual good news. Our coastal recovery on the beach access, uh, damage after Nicole. We had 36 out of 141 walkways, um, open. Well, as of September 15th, there's 107 out of 141 walkway overs are open. Um, two out of 17 parks were open after the hurricane. Now we have. Two out of 17 parks were open after the hurricane, now we have 16 coastal parks open. Four out of 37 ramps were open after the hurricane. Now, we have all the, all the vehicle ramps have construction or pedestrian access to them. So that's some good news. And if anyone wants to help with a cleanup at Embry-Riddle with Chapter of the Delta Chi, they're rescinding another cleanup, meeting at Walgreens on Bevel, October 7th at noon, and welcome anyone that wants to attend. Happy birthday. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Henry?
No comments tonight.
Whoa. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir, I want to bring to your attention the, the books that we're giving away in conjunction with several, you just got a flyer on your, on the dais.
Okay.
You want to talk about that one?
Go ahead, we'll be talking about it.
Okay. Dr. Primrose Cameron called us, they're going to give away 20,000 books, we're utilizing the Dickerson Center, it's going to be on October 7th, that same date, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dickerson Center. Come one, come all, bring children, these are books for all, this is books for families and for educators, and first come, first served. And so arrive early, so you can get your books. It says, parents and guardians are welcome to choose up to 10 books per child for home libraries. So please, please, we're going to be advertising this even more so, 20,000 books that we're giving away. They asked to utilize our facilities, and the mayor made sure that this happened, okay? There's a riddle that says, what walks on four legs then walks on two legs then walks on three?
Baby person, older person.
Man, thank you, Ben, because you crawl first on all four, then you become of age as ourselves, you walk on two, and then when you become elderly, you have a cane. He doesn't have a cane tonight, I'm not saying he's elderly. But I said that to say, I shared that riddle, because there are two, two groups of Citizen Reed that are very dear to me, and one is children. You know, with COVID and then the flood, our kids have gone through so much, and I really feel as if there's so much more we can do for them, to let them know that we appreciate them. So, I'm asking my colleagues if you would join me and the Torretugas in having a Daytona Beach Children's Christmas party. We have already met, the Torretugas have agreed to let us utilize Jackie Robinson Park, they have some blowups, we're convening this Friday here at City Hall to really start putting the, the plans into place, but I'd like to see, like, videos on the Jumbotron, hot chocolate stations, games for them to play, the Torretugas have some blowup things, but just have a good old, you know, fun time, I know you've got the Santa Run, and we're looking at kids between the ages of, like, maybe first grade, six through 12, that would be able to come, or maybe even a little younger, 3 to 12, that could come accompanied by a parent, and we're going to be serving hot dogs, and just having a good old time, and each child is going to get a book, and, but we're asking that they bring a canned good, so that we can help those that are less fortunate. That's their entry, there is no fee, other than just bringing a dry good, or some perishable, non-perishable food item as an entry. So please consider helping me, support the children of our community, okay?
Would this be a daytime event or an evening event?
It's going to be an evening event, so we can light up the park and show a video on the screen.
And are we, when is our, when is our Christmas parade?
Steph has already chosen a date that is not in conflict with that, okay? And I'd be able to tell you even more, I just really wanted to lay it out there tonight for you all to think about it, and I don't know the expense as of yet, but if you would please consider helping our children. Now, the other is the totally opposite, that riddle, is our senior oasis. You know, when Charles Bryant was here, he was very diligent about having a senior prom for our seniors that attend our oasis groups, and they love it, it gives them a reason to dress up, and to get out, and to shake what their mama gave them, and I'd like to continue that. So this past February, I actually supported it by myself, but I've already been given the price by staff on what it is to bring this thing back in December, and it's like $6,000. So I'd like to know if you all would like to help with Oasis, and you know, Mr. Manager, maybe we need to look at putting some more money in senior oasis. We've got five different centers, and five different groups of, of seniors go to these centers every week, and they're full, they have waiting lists, and it's, it's an opportunity for them to get out of their homes, because if you stay in your house long enough and have no activity, those walls will start closing in on you. And these are the shoulders on which we rest upon, this is the Citizen Reed that kept Daytona going, and now we're the leaders of that city. So if you would consider also helping me in supporting them with their senior prom this December, I would greatly appreciate that as well, okay?
I'll write this down.
That's from ARPA, right?
Yes.
Because you all got to use that, you got to use it, so go ahead and use your money. I'm not giving you my.
Would anybody else like to make a contribution tonight?
How much did you give, Paula?
To what? Which one?
To the senior oasis.
To the senior prom?
Yeah.
What, I gave them 6,000, so it's 6,000 again.
Okay.
Why, you want to match whatever I give?
Am I what?
You want to match whatever I give?
Probably, but not tonight.
Talk about the cane.
No, no, Monica listed him when I said. All right, so think about that, you all okay? All right, I think they would greatly appreciate it.
And, and we'll bring that back for, to fold into the normal resolution, approving ARPA funds.
Oh, yeah, we just, I just try to get money when I can, Ben, by talking about it now. That concludes my comments, although I do kick off the meet your commissioner, I don't know what happened, why nobody wanted the first meeting, that the, well, the first shall be last, and the last shall be first, so six shall be first, I'm October 3rd, while I'll get to meet my new constituents. I've already made my video, staff has created large maps, so they can see the outline, I'm going to tour my zone, so I know exactly what my new demographic that I serve is, and I'm excited about some of the businesses I'm going to now have, and some funds that will be able to come into my zone because of the going out west, all right?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner?
No comment.
Couple of things. Just some food for thought, I don't know what it'll take for us to do that, probably have to talk to the city attorney over there and the city manager, but I would like to see us, in the future, make our city more small business friendly, I would like to have maybe possibly an ombudsman available for people that want to go into business here, as small businesses, and, and to kind of streamline our process, so that we don't continue to talk about the same things over and over for a long time, we have a couple businesses right now, I would like to see their, their issues resolved. I support their businesses, but I'm just tired of hearing about it and talking about it, been going on a couple of years with both of them, seems like we should be able to resolve those issues, you know, to, you know, for zoning changes and those kinds of things, they just get long and drawn out, and, and it just, one obstacle after another. We need to be able to, when new businesses come to town, to just say, here's a packet, this is what you got to do, this is the person that will help walk you through the process from the city, and let's do this and get it done. I've even heard stories, now I can't substantiate this, of people that came here and tried to open businesses, and went broke before they could ever open the door, trying to do everything that we want them to do. I'd like to see that process streamlined, because we do have a reputation of not being very small business friendly, and that needs to stop, and, and reset, and make it a place where people want to come, open businesses, make a little money, and be part of our wonderful community we have here.
I concur with Commissioner Strickland just said, I know we're about to do something with our incubator, am I right? He's typing. Right, we're, we're about to do something with our, revamping our whole incubator system, right? And that could possibly be a place where they would go, so they don't get lost in City Hall, but if it's to help small businesses in the incubator, then move out and do their own thing, then maybe they could go there and have an administrative office where someone, because we had an ombudsman, I don't know what happened to it.
We, we still do have one, so I would like to know what businesses are having an issue or concern, that I can see if there's a roadblock within the staffing level, or if there's a roadblock on the other side.
Where do they go? Where's the ombudsman else?
Because Kent, who brought it up last year.
Kim Flaherty and PNL, but also we have Jeff Brown, our Economic Development Director, that will be willing to help people through, and also our redevelopment staff. So if there's a direct group, I'm good at working through the processes and making sure that both steps are followed on all areas, so if there is a particular group, or a business that is having a problem, and they can't get through with the staff, you all just direct me and let me know what that business is, and I'll contact them myself, and see where the problem lies, and where's the barrier that's causing them not to be able to move forward.
And it is true, because I've gotten quite a bit of complaints about people's process moving extremely slow, and running into 10 and 15 different issues, and.
The left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing.
Right hand is doing, yeah, and I've, I've been hearing that for years and years. Even I know that when I opened a business here, it was much easier to open the same exact business in Holly Hill than it was to open it here in Daytona, which is why I opened it in Holly Hill, but that's neither here nor there. I would like for Daytona to be a little more business friendly as well, small business friendly as well.
I would like, not taking up your time, but I would like to say something too. I know there's a business on Main Street, I believe, I don't have the address, I have to send it, I believe it's 916, it's a tattoo shop, I think it was probably two years ago up here, we passed the art district thing, and then we made, I think it was for everyone, like a two-year span, well, he was never able to do it, because he had to put a retention pawn in as well, which he's been trying to work on that for two years now, and they're just a young couple, they can't get through the process, he's hired all these people, and I recently talked to Doug, and I think Doug is walking them, kind of going to try to help walk them through, and when they do, I would like to bring something back, that we do that art district again, because he is a artist, because it was never done. Can I have agreement on that?
If we.
Give that trial to him again, once he gets his retention pawn in?
Well, I think we need to revisit what it is.
Yeah, he, I think he wants to do something on the side of his property.
Oh, so it's like.
That's, yeah, remember, we gave, we gave permission, and we.
And nothing ever happened?
No, it never happened, he, he actually had all these artists and everything, and then he had to cancel it because.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with, okay, and then he had to cancel, but he does need to get his retention pawn in, and I think they're trying to work with him to guide him through that process.
Okay.
Could I get the judge to come up and say a few words along the lines of what I'm talking about? Right over here. Please?
Yes, it's, come on, Judge. Judge gave me a sign that I still use, but I'll say it after he goes.
Okay.
Do I only get three minutes, or can I get some?
He's in charge of the making of that.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Hubert Grimes, and I'm a lawyer with Motz Grimes Law Firm here, and in keeping with what Mr. Strickland's talking about, we, I represent Ronald Kendrick and the Vision Entertainment Center as part of Daytona Beach, as part of Daytona Mall. The owner of the mall, of course, is going through this rezoning process, that will include what Mr. Kendrick is trying to do. We got caught up in, I believe, a quandary, which is time quandary, at least with Mr. Kendrick. Now, Mr. Padre, and I'm working with Rob Merrill on this, and Rob has indicated to me that they've gotten roughly about 85% of everything done for the rezoning, so they anticipate being completed by the end of December, and we've got a couple of other meetings that they've got to go through. The problem for us is that he's at a point now where the best opportunity he has to earn an income is during Bethune-Cookman's Homecoming, Bike Week, Thanksgiving weekend, and the other holidays. And so the problem is that we've done everything that we can do in order to prepare ourselves for that, but because of the quandary, Mr., because of the timelines, we're just not able to open unless we can, or should I say, we're not able to get the extended hours permit because of the need to get the rezoning completed. And so my request is basically, on his behalf, is to give us a special exception to allow for them during the next few months, and the manager's been working with us, and all the other staff members have been, but we're just in that time crunch that we cannot otherwise operate with the extended hours. He wanted us to be able to, he's applied for it, but as of now, it can't be done until the rezoning is completed. So the rezoning creates sort of a process that keeps us going around in circles, and so we're asking the commission to give a special exception to allow during this time period for him to be able to have the extended hours permit. I know it's a little different from the normal process, but we're asking, almost said asking the court, asking you all to consider that particular matter. It will certainly help him as a small business owner. He's put in lighting, he's put in cameras, he's put in the security, he's hired a private security company that's got its own liability insurance, the, we submitted that to the owner, the owner is okay with that, the owner's on board with that, but the owner does not want to have to pay. We thought we could do a, an expedited plan with Mr. Kendrick, but as it turns out, as the owner has advised, he just doesn't want to have to pay for this process twice, so we're asking for your consideration, and granting us a special exception to allow us to do that. Since Bike Week is coming upon us very rapidly.
Needless to say, I've, nothing like this has ever happened since I've been up here, so I don't know what that looks like, or, I don't just make things happen, it's got a process, because if we make it happen one time, and you just make it happen, everybody's going to say, make it happen. And so I just, I'm not going to go down that road just like that. What's, what do you say, Mr. Manager, and what, because I don't know.
There are two folds, I think, that Attorney Gross will opine on some of this, however, there is one statement, Judge Grimes, that the, the staff and communications with Mr. Padre advised him that he would not have to pay for two processes to go through that, in a communication that also went to Mr. Rob Merrill on August the 18th at 2023. And so we were trying to expedite the process, and we waved that through Mr. Padre stating that he would not have to pay that, and he refused to move forward with that item, so that's key. One of the big issues that we have with the extended hours permit, why that cannot be allowed from my office or the chief, is because the zoning for the particular property does not allow it.
Right.
And that's where we are, and I don't know from a legal standpoint if that is allowed to take place, and so Ben would have to, to, to take that, if that will be allowed, which I don't think it could be.
Yeah, so first of all, the starting point is the state statutes, which require the establishment serving alcoholic beverages close at midnight, except where permitted by local ordinance. Your ordinance, which is in the Code of Ordinances, provides for extended hours permits only if certain conditions are met. Those conditions do not provide for or contemplate that you would grant a waiver, if you were to grant a waiver.
Sorry about that. The state statute, I'm going to repeat for the audience, requires alcoholic beverage establishments to close at midnight unless a local ordinance permits longer hours. Your local ordinance is Section 103 of the Code, it's not in the land development code, there are no variances or special exceptions to 103. 103 requires that in order for somebody to get an extended hours permit, they have to comply with all applicable laws, including our land development code. There is no exception to that process, under your, under your ordinance.
So basically, you're saying we couldn't do that anyway?
I, I, I think if you were to try to do that, that wouldn't be compliant with state law, because first of all, it's not pursuant to an ordinance, and second of all, if you did it anyway, I think you would substantially risk problems in enforcing your other problems with the extended hours permits, not the least of which would be, as, as you suggested, Mr. Mayor, you'd have an awful lot of operators coming in and asking you for exceptions, like you see with, you know, Bike Week and Biketoberfest. But, I mean, apart from the administrative issues, I think you could, you could risk the extended hours program, you could put that in legal jeopardy by doing it, by doing that. Now, you could request us to amend the ordinance and maybe build in an exception process, but that would have to be done by an ordinance, I don't think that would necessarily get done in time. done in time for this event to occur. And I, I think it would take some work to figure out what, what would be the bases for providing an exception, so.
In, in your remarks, you're saying that the owner of the property basically didn't agree to-
That, that is correct.
Execute the-
That is correct. We had numerous men, he agreed, but his agreement is that he wants everything to be rushed for his entire property. And we stated that in order for Mr. Kendrick to do what we wanted, we wanted to accelerate his process, because it's a smaller thing that for people to do. And our, our staff put a timeline together for this to be approved by the commission on October the fourth. That would allow for Mr. Kendrick to be open for all special events, for homecoming activities, and for Bike Week. This was communicated and laid out with Attorney Merrill of Cobb Cole and Mr. Pedro, who did not want that to move forward. He agrees with allowing for the zoning to take place, which, for the plaza, which we will support, but he did not want to move forward with the separation, and he stated, as Judge Grimes has stated, that he didn't want to have to pay two, two times. We understood that, we waived that. We were not going to charge that, that process, and that was in writing, that he would not have to go through that process.
Mr. Manager, if I could just interrupt you, I think the, and you're right, the city wasn't going to charge, but he felt like his attorney would be the one, that he's still got to take care of the, the other side. So that was part of his most recent conversation with me. So that's why we counted a quandary. He's, like I said, we, he's done everything that they need to do, basically, except for the meetings. So that'll happen probably before the end of the year, it's just that we're kind of at that point now where we, you know, timeline is just a little, is more difficult.
I have a question. And it might still be null and void because of the zoning, whatever, but what kind of permit, and that maybe it's because she owned it, I might be answering my own question. Pat Heard had a special, special event or a special whatever on her property when these events took place, what was that called?
That was, we were doing the Bike Week. That was-
Those are, yeah, so when the commission approves Bike Week and Biketoberfest master planned activities, they're approving a particular type of temporary outdoor activity that's authorized under the Land Development Code in, in blighted areas. It applies to outdoor areas.
Maybe I'm not asking the right question. I want to know, not so much about the blighted and everything, but what did she apply for? She applied for some kind of special, because she was out of, so it was outdoor? Okay.
It's a type of temporary outdoor permit that you all approve under Section 54(c)(11) of the Land Development Code.
Okay, so if it's not outdoor, and you want to do a special event, and you own the property, is there something for that?
There's nothing in the Land Development Code for that.
Okay, because I was wondering if Mr., is it Padre?
Padre.
Okay, if the owner wanted to do something in his establishment, but leased it to Mr. Kendrick for him to do it, even if it had to end at midnight so he could do something, because he only has the food part till midnight, right?
He actually has, he's open till midnight, we're clear on midnight.
Right now.
But because of the types of activities during Bike Week, home, yeah, a lot of folks don't come out until late as we-
Yeah, but something is better than nothing, I'm trying to help you all now.
I don't disagree.
I mean, homecoming game is gonna be over by seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, go straight to Kendrick's place.
Please tell.
It won't work like that either.
I'll be there from seven to midnight, well, seven to ten.
But that next generation that comes after you, they're the ones that want to stay past midnight, so. I realize, I realize it's a quandary, but it's something that we're trying to, we've been trying to scratch our heads and come up with some way of trying to help him so that he can use that extra two hours, I guess it is, to be able to have a good program. But we, we will be back, of course, we know that the, everything else, like Mr. Merrill is doing, as relates to the entirety of, of the plaza, is underway, and he and I are in regular communication. But like I said, what happens in October? October is that busy month for, you know, tourist events, and that's why.
But can't he do it somewhere else? Rent one of our facilities?
No, he needs his facility, that's what he rented.
No, he's got his alcohol license, he's got all those other things, he's got everything else that he needed, except he can't get the extension because of the zoning, and he can't get the zoning because Mr. Padre's piece doesn't end until later in the year.
It, it sounds to me, though, like Mr. Padre is not complying with you all.
Mr. Padre is gonna take this place-
He's not complying, because the bottom line is, Rob Merrill's not gonna charge him twice to do a rezoning. If you say the rezoning is a rezoning, then we just, we're just gonna charge him one time. So I don't quite understand that. It sounds as though he's the one that's impeding you from being able to execute-
Well, this, this whole process, I think Commissioner Strickland hit it on the head, and he said that, you know, it's taken a couple of years, and we've been at this, it's been start, stop, start, stop, start, stop. And this is kind of that last hurdle that he needs in order to have a fully functioning operation, so.
Okay.
All right.
Hold it, hold it there. What did you say could happen?
We, we could amend the ordinance on extended hours permits. I, I don't, we'd take two readings of an ordinance, and we'd have to figure out, under what circumstances would you want to grant an exception? And I, I, I wouldn't be able to just think of that off the top of my head, I'd have to understand what circumstances you'd want to grant those exceptions.
So we'd have to grant an exception, and it would be a rule?
It would be-
And it would be some sort of rule?
You could-
Or norm, we'd have to grant the exception every time someone showed up with that exception?
I, I, I think you would, yeah. And you'd have to articulate a rule that, that would make sense as to why some people have an exception and others don't, others don't. And I don't know what that would be, I, I-
And how long would that take?
It would take two readings of an ordinance after the ordinance is drafted.
This is one of two readings, this was their night, tonight, for that expect, that expedient bet that we were offering. Tonight was the first reading, October fourth was the second reading, and homecoming is, is the fourteenth. We wouldn't have met again. I don't believe.
And for me, this goes back to seven, one, twenty-one. That's the first time I had a conversation about the application with the property owner. It's two years ago.
Yeah, homecoming would be over.
I don't know. We don't, we don't have the mechanism to do it.
The owner is the holdup, and has always been the holdup. I read the bulleted list of how the manager has met since twenty-one, and when he says yes, and then he hasn't come in and done what he's supposed to do twice, then he said yes, and then last week he reneged, and he said he wanted it all together. After staff took the time to expedite this for Mr. Kendrick, we were moving forward, and then the owner said, "No, I want my PD to be all in one," although we're not charging for two PDs. Okay, this is what I'm gonna suggest. If we could get the owner, if we could get him to, where Rob Merrill left, if we could get the owner to realize that he's not paying for an extra PD, I would be willing to have a special meeting for us to vote for this to go through, and then have the second reading on our regularly scheduled commission meeting.
There are four groups, or three groups. The Midtown Redevelopment Board-
They already-
The Planning Board, and if you look at nine, twelve, twenty-three, was supposed to be the Midtown Redevelopment Board, nine, twenty, twenty-three was the first reading of the City Commission, so we were gonna actually have the Planning Commission meeting after your meeting on nine, twenty-eight, twenty-three, and the final reading on ten, four, twenty-three, second reading, City Commission. I've said it to you, I, Mr. Padre has not been upfront with me as the city manager, with the community. I have the records that go back of trying to get this open and accelerate to make sure that the individuals on this side had an opportunity for entertainment in the community, and he has not done his job. The staff of the City of Daytona Beach, in this particular instance, once we got to the point of this being accelerated, did what was requested. You asked for a meeting with the commission, with the attorney and myself, and you asked us directly to find a way to accelerate this process. I passed this information on to Dennis Rosak. Dennis laid out a plan of action to move this forward. Mr. Padre and Rob Merrill were communicated with over the phone and in email. They did not hold up their end of the bargain to accelerate this particular item, so Mr. Kendrick, who has invested a lot of money, and I've been meeting with him since seven, one of twenty-one, to have an entertainment center in that facility, and the owner of that property has not done what he needed to do with the staff members I assigned this to. If there was a way for me to approve it, I would not have a problem approving this. But there is no roadmap to get us where we need to be in time for him to provide entertainment for the visitors that are gonna come to this area, for Bethune-Cookman's Homecoming and for Bike Week. And that's where we are with the process.
When is Bike Week?
Nineteenth through the twentieth, twenty-first, I think.
So if we can't meet homecoming, I don't know if the other-
You can't meet that, because you got other parties that have to meet.
Right.
And it's not reasonable or fair to just expect them to, to do that, even though, you know, I will come in for a special meeting, but that's-
There's just one board, three.
One board, that's not, not right.
Well, we are, continue to try to find some way to get it done. So if, I'll reach back out to Mr. Merrill again and see if they're willing to maybe engage with the second phase, with what you were saying, Commissioner Reed, if they're, and I'll know about tomorrow if he can, or if he will.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland.
I will close with this. You've just seen proof of why I say we need to streamline our process and we need an ombudsman. Everybody is trying to do their best they can to move this forward, and we just keep banging into each other and into the wall, and now I've got the city manager's problem had at me for bringing this up. However-
I'm not mad with you, because it is not the small business owner.
Oh, I understand.
He's done his job, it is the owner of that property-
Right.
-that took up-
But this is just one, this is just one example, Mr. Manager. You know, that over the years, I've seen a lot of people come and try to open businesses, and they spend all their money and never get it done. And I'm sure y'all have seen that, too, if you want to say so, that's great. But at any rate, that's what I mean, we need a way to streamline our process to help small business people that have just enough money to open the door, but not enough money to hire Mr. Merrill, or, or Mr. Storch, or some of those guys, to move their process forward. If we could do that in the future and look at that as a way to streamline everything, I think it would be very helpful for the city of Daytona Beach, and I'm gonna shut up now.
With, with all due respect, what you're saying, though, is, is that when you had a commissioner, I know at least one commissioner stated on record that she clearly met with the manager regarding this. And then the manager meets with all of these notations, is, you can't get no better ombudsman than if the manager's working with you to get through something. That doesn't have anything to do with the city staff, or the city processes blocking anything. That's one business owner who has not decided that he's committed to the project as the investor is.
Right.
That's what that is. Now-
That's with this particular case.
Yeah, but, but we don't want to, you know, we're dealing with one case. We had a businessman, and I've spoken to Mr. Kendrick, and spoken to quite a few other people, as well as the manager, about this. My position has always been not to block this, to allow it to make it through the process and receive a fair opportunity to be successful. I don't know what the staff could have done more. Okay, you got other businesses, I don't, I don't know that that's a problem for me. When I get a small business that calls me, and they're having a problem, and I call the manager, this is the same type of service that they usually receive. Okay, and that doesn't mean that we don't want to be better. But let's, if we got something that we're not better at, then let's say what it is. This is not it. But when it's the case that we need to improve, then let's work at that. I don't, I don't think this is it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might say something, I do want to commend the manager and staff, because it was a no when I went to speak with them. But once I, I had my conversation, he did gather staff together, like you said, with Dennis, and with Legal and what have you, and they put together an expedition plan, a plan to expedite for Mr. Kendrick. And I was really proud of them for doing that, because they were telling me no, too. But they, they gave it another look, and, and I think we, we did more than what was expected of us, because it was no back then. And for us to come forward and say, "This is what we can do for you," and the owner to be the, the hindrance, I told Mr. Kendrick, I think he needs to check his lease, because does he want you to be successful? Because he's the block. This is not going to hurt the rest of the mall, or, or the, the other project that's pending on the PD by allowing he to do, him to do this. I think it's a shame. It's a shame that he's hindering him, he's been paying rent these two years, he has invested all this money to make this place into a beautiful place. I went there, the alumni event there, I went there and ate me some wings and listened to this great artist perform, and it's just a shame, it really is, it really is.
Is, is there an opportunity beyond, if, if somehow he is rescued from his inaction, for us to be successful in, in time?
Once Judge Ron says he's gonna meet with Rob Merrill tomorrow, I see there, there is a consensus of commissioners, sort of, that they would be willing to have a special meeting, we will look at the timeline and see if it is a possibility or not, and if it is a possible, possibility, we'll bring that back to the commission.
Would all of that have to go all the way through all of that?
It is a process.
I don't see that as a possibility.
Yeah, that's why, I know, that's-
I don't see that as a possibility.
That's why I'm, I'm disappointed in the property owner, who, who had the chance, based off of our, my notes, that this would have been done, and he could have been open for all of the activities of October through Bike Week, and, and it would have been in place, irregardless of what took place on the next phase of rezoning the property in January or February.
Does this mean that in December, when they go through their process with whatever else they're doing, it would then be approved in December?
Yes.
That he loses all of this.
So my curiosity is the owner, that's my curiosity.
He needs to sue the owner.
Can I just make a suggestion, because we have a lot of, I mean, there's been three instances that people want to do businesses in certain areas, and then they're not zoned for it. Either they purchase it, there was a psychiatrist here back in the seventies, but it's no longer appropriate. So the thing is, if you contact staff, they will help you to let you know what the property is zoned for. So I think it's just very important that contact staff to see if you could actually do the business you'd like to do in a certain area, just so all of this process doesn't have to-
Yeah, that, that's nice, but it's two years. So even if something happens, you know-
I know, but if I'm gonna rent a property, I'm gonna make sure that I could do that business before I invest all this money.
A lot of times, people are willing to go through the change to get it changed. That's a part of the process, and they know that, all right, I gotta go through this process. It shouldn't take two years for us to get through a process, and that's, that's what we're saying.
But it wasn't the city, it was the property owner, which is public property, so how do we push something like that?
Yeah, well, we can't, but the point is, I mean, what, to me, it sounds like what you're saying is, you're telling residents to look at what it does, it doesn't mean that he didn't look at it. He looked at it, he realized that, "This is what I have to do." The process was there for him to be able to do it. And most people, when they invest, even if they're local and they're small, they know they have to go and, and read that and go through that process. I, I just, I just don't think we can say to our, even to our residents, this is an isolated case of a, of a, of a male business owner. He's male, and he didn't adjust himself to what he should have to someone who's invested in the place. But that's, I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, is there anything else?
I said too much, I'm done.
You didn't say too much, you said what you, you were supposed to say, according to what you believed and according to the constituents that you represent.
I'd like to say one more thing.
And that's always respected and appreciated.
I'd like to just say one more thing. The zoning in Midtown has been an issue for some time now, and I think we need to look at that. If we do want to revive that area, it may be- If we do want to revive that area, it may be antiquated. It's, it's something that needs to be looked at, and how can we help it be successful? And I leave that on the table.
All right, I'll leave that one alone, but some of that, again, is things that we brought into play.
Exactly.
Based on redevelopment boards and things that you want to do in redevelopment, things that you don't want to do. You don't want too many car washes, don't want too many of this. So you have to have regulation. Okay, Commissioner?
I'll keep it short. Next time we meet, I'd like to bring forward maybe two or three ideas about how we can move our historic trails forward a little bit, whether it's the QR codes, whether it's historic tours downtown, whether it is some sort of movement through the Midtown area that has the historic trail worked into it. So I'm hoping we can have a conversation about that.
By historic trail, you mean?
Black historic trail.
Okay.
The sites. I've been working with some people and exploring some ideas, and I want to bring some of it forward so we can maybe start to implement some of it in the new year.
Very interested in that, want to see that happen. And we should have had by now something that says that when I go to this location, and if we need to hire someone outside to do that, then that's what ARPA funds are for. Let's get someone...
My goal is to actually have a tour, some sort of moving tour. I'm working at two different angles right now, and hopefully by next meeting, I'll have something to share with you.
Okay, I would love to hear that, and I'm very much excited about it.
I'd like to interject on that as well. With Commissioner Strickland and I also having a part of Midtown in our zones, I think we should have a public meeting, the three of us, to discuss the potentiality of that developing because I'm very much interested in that as well, particularly being a homegirl.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, I, I want to see that happen because that's a part of the history that we want to accentuate. And when someone shows up, I do want them to have a marker in place, and they can scan it, even if we don't have a guided tour or a person giving the tour. I should be able to go on our website, these are the eighteen or nineteen historic locations. I go there, I hit a QR code, it tells me through my earbuds what this site was like. Ms. Rubin's been telling us to get the oral histories done. Let's do those things.
And then the other thing was, we had discussed in our community centers that we would have some sort of historic memorabilia, especially in the Cherry Center, and so we're trying to figure out, I think we're still trying to figure out what we would need to make that happen. For each of the centers, a little history. But I think that could also be a great part of the tour.
Yeah, okay, great. Sounds great.
It's history, even prior to naming it the Cherry Center.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, very much so. Okay, I guess, is that it? Could you post the, the book? Okay, Commissioner Reed went over this, and I have been working, and I want to thank Ms. Goodman for working, because this came before my desk about a week ago. And in order to turn something like this over by October seventh is a Herculean effort. And staff, we'll have a lot of staff involved to make this happen because you're talking about not a hundred books, not a thousand books, not ten thousand, but giving away twenty thousand books. That's a lot of books. And this has been a commission that's embracing the idea of education. We have created and given vending machines to almost all of our elementary schools. I think the only two that don't have them are beachside schools, and I would admonish or encourage the beachside commissioners to consider putting a book vending machine in your zone in those two schools. But this is one of my most excited, one of the most exciting opportunities for my office as mayor to work on. Each child who comes will be able to get five books. I've looked at some of the labels of some of the books. Phenomenal, top-tier books. Each household, I think, will be able to get, I think upwards of twenty books. Teachers can come and get libraries for their classroom. We will be able to take and get books that we will be able to use at all of our little libraries, at all of our community centers. So we are concerned about, Ms. Goodman and I, about how we're going to get the twenty thousand books donated, because if we don't get rid of the books, we're stuck with them. But guess what? I'm not mad about that. Because if I'm stuck with five thousand books, we will be able to take a certain portion of them to all of our schools, give them to the book vending machines. Commissioner Reed is, is having a distribution center. We will have other book giveaways in the future. So as a part of this, I'm asking everyone in my, the sound of my voice and in the community to disseminate this everywhere. Take it to all your churches, take it to all your mentoring groups. We want the Purple Princess group here. We want Derek and his mentoring group here. Every group in Daytona Beach that mentors children, we want children there to get their books because the number one way to enhance literacy is to put books in the hands of children and give them opportunities to read books on their grade level. We will be, the mayor's office using ARPA funds, is what ARPA funds for. We will give out hot dogs, drinks, we will have bounce houses, face painting. We want to celebrate literacy in Daytona Beach on this day. So let's, because this is a short amount of time, I need everyone to push this through every medium that you can imagine. And I thank the city staff for what you have already done, the planning that you have already invested, because ideas don't just happen. We bring ideas in, and the staff then has to run around and try to make them happen. And, and they're doing a great job with this. Okay, do you have the other event that I sent? Okay, Midtown Cafe Arts Festival, the mural reveal will be on Saturday, September twenty-third. The official reveal will be at seven o'clock. Please disseminate this. Tonight, we celebrated Black Business Month in America. Okay? Great. Well, you can't celebrate businesses in, in the African-American community in, in Midtown if you don't get people to go to those businesses. So what I have done, again, using ARPA funds, and each time that we, each time that we unveil a mural, I think that we should do something as a community to celebrate that mural, get people to that location. That's the purpose of the murals. The whole purpose is to get people to go there, to see the murals, and then to, what, patronize the business. So what we're doing is, the first hundred and fifty people who show up between six and nine will receive a meal from, from the Midtown Cafe. That way, you get to taste their cuisine, see their mural, see the great job that they've done to reinvest in that community. They spent a lot of money. So we now need to get out and support them. Now, every one of them that does a mural, I think we need to find some sort of way to support the business and then incentivize people to come down there to that, to that business. And, and those of you who are on Main Street, downtown, we need to see more murals. We only have so much time to get these murals done. Now, if, but I do have an option and a plan if we don't get it done. We're going to have to go through a nonprofit and then have them to execute. So, because we have to, we, we've got to get these murals done. Okay, last thing. The First Step Shelter, New Smyrna Beach has joined the First Step Shelter, and that's a big win for us. Very excited about that. So that means that they will partner with us financially and that we will service residents of New Smyrna Beach to use both, both the shelter as well as the safe zone. They have asked that they be afforded a permanent seat on the First Step Shelter Board. Our city attorney and manager are working to bring before us the documentation necessary for us to be able to put a board member in place. What was the other thing that they asked? Is there anything else?
No.
No, that's it? Okay. So please be on the lookout for that, that will come before us. Commissioner Strickland?
Don't we already have a vacant seat on the board?
We have a vacant seat, but they're asking that theirs be ratified by us, and we have to have an inter-local agreement between us and them that affords them a permanent seat so long as they're a part of, you know, paying their money.
Okay.
And, and there's another caveat to that. I don't know if we're going to need two seats because we still want to get someone from the county, and we have a commitment from one of the members.
I'm going to go out on a limb again. Since we voted to expand that board, we have somebody on that board sitting in one of those seats now that is no longer an elected official. Would it not make sense to remove that person and put somebody from the county in that seat?
Well, they don't, he doesn't want to be removed. The person wants to continue in his service, and the board members are favorable. He offers something to them.
What did he offer? Money? Is he bringing money to, to the table?
Well, Commissioner...
I regret that vote to expand that, those seats on that, I really do.
Okay. Well, I, I'm glad that, you know, we expanded it. You regret it because you...
Why? Tell me why, man.
Well, we're public. You regret it because you don't think that one of the members should still be on the board. Is that not...
Is this an appropriate time to get real honesty in front of everybody?
Yeah, because we have, we can't. You and I can't go out and talk about it in public.
I know, we can't talk about it in private.
We can't go out and talk about it when you're, when you come to every meeting.
But it's kind of, it's kind of strange, though. You can't talk about it because you're on that board.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Okay, so we can talk about it now.
So we need his approval to talk about it.
Not now, we can talk about it now.
You, you can't talk about it except now because you're on the member, you're, you're on the same body that would determine who, who does and doesn't get on...
But we can talk about it right now.
Yes, right now, you can talk...
I just, I just think that been very disruptive, very accusatory, that person that we put on there, and, and that it's, it's not beneficial. I have a question that I'm going to ask. I'll tell you now, I'll warn you on Monday. I'm going to ask, they always, and he's the leader of the pack, why, what's the, the, what Victoria's job description is? What's her mission statement? My question is, is what's the job description and mission statement of the board? And, and the reason I say that, I, I feel like that a board is to be there to support her and to help her do the best job she can running that place rather than always questioning everything she does, because I don't think that person and a bunch of the others up there have any knowledge of homeless people. They probably never talked to one unless they walked out into the big building there and said, hey, I need that. They, they have no clue a, and what she has to put up with, what she has to do. We hired her as an expert, and she's always being questioned and always being abused. So, you know, verbally by them at the, at the board meetings.
By that particular person?
Well...
Where, and...
That goes deeper, and, and I can't talk about that in public.
Yeah, well, okay, but then you can't tell me about it. And I'm the board president, but you, so you can't tell me unless you tell me right...
Put it on the restroom wall, you go in there and read it.
But here's the point. That would still be illegal, right? He said that facetiously.
Yeah, just for the record, right.
That was a joke. And I'm not going to look in the bathroom wall. Okay. My position is this, and I have, you know, navigating a commission that generally really does a good job of getting along.
Until tonight.
Well, oh, it's even tonight. Even tonight is great. But he gets paid a good salary. He gets paid a good salary. She gets paid a good salary. Board members don't get paid nothing. And when you are the executive director, you have to be able to manage and navigate boards. I don't let people beat up on people. I don't allow, I don't let them beat up on you. But you have a right as a board member to question what your job description is. I don't think that those things are unreasonable and to ask what you're doing. And so things that, you know, I will just leave it at this. I've, I'm supportive of our executive director, but I'm also supportive of board members challenging the executive director, just like I'm supportive of commissioners challenging the manager, challenging the attorney. Otherwise, they're going to run you into places that you don't want to go. You have to question folks. If you don't, then you're not doing your job. But that's my position on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, did I?
I have a question about the shelter. So do we have all the cities on the east side that has partnered except for South Daytona?
South Daytona, South Daytona. Holly Hills still in. South Daytona's not.
Of course.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, that concludes my remarks. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Yeah, I did want to say in reference... I did want to say in reference to the signage, we did put in a grant for, for fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for interactive signs that will deal with some of our trails. But we'll also be bringing something back to you because we do still have some ARPA funds that are available that could go towards that as well. But we put in a grant, I think, in June.
Mm-hmm, okay, great job.
Just have a good night, thank you.
Yes, sir. Great meeting, guys, great meeting. We will now hear from the greatest residents in America, the citizens of Daytona Beach.
Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment forum. During this time, citizens are allowed three minutes to speak on any topic. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. And our first speaker is Jack Riston, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Jack Riston, twenty-one, twenty-four, South Peninsula. I've been given a project to take care of Peninsula Drive. And my main concern here, that you all, that the courts have allowed the panhandlers to come back. And I've been coming here for thirty years. I finally bought a house on Peninsula Drive. And at one time, it was terrible just to get to the beach for the panhandlers. So I'm concerned about the panhandlers in the street. Is the panhandler a jaywalker, or is the panhandler a pedestrian? A pedestrian goes from point A to point B when the light says go, and he walks in the white line. The panhandlers up at Ridgewood and International, they were all over the neighborhood. Every car just pounding on you, you know, looking for money, looking for this, looking for that. So I want to know, if I clip a panhandler with my mirror, am I in trouble when he's in the street? Is the he going to be protected, or am I going to be protected? That's my, that's that concern. And the other concern is, I ride a motorcycle, and Peninsula Drive is terrible. So I've been given a project to get all the potholes because it's a, it's a Volusia County road, and y'all don't fix them. And so that's that project. And then the other thing is about the sidewalks. Where I come from, the builders, when they put in a project, they had to put in the sidewalk. I don't know whether y'all make them do that or not. And the other thing is the jaywalkers. I grew up in Virginia, worked in DC, and in DC, jaywalkers' fine was five to five hundred dollars. So, I mean, I don't know how y'all do jaywalking down here or whatever. But that's the few concerns I had about, you know, but my main concern is about the panhandlers in the streets.
I'm with you. I wish we could do...
Well, like I say, Morgan and Morgans and Dan the Man. My insurance went up two hundred dollars this year. I don't know why.
You, you got off cheap compared to the rest of us. I went up a thousand dollars, I think. Okay.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Joseph Vetta.
I don't agree with that.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. The bathrooms are now open, so for the public, you could use the bathrooms out this door. Secondly, there are several things I wish the city manager had stayed. the city manager had stayed. Uh, where are we on, uh, the thirty million dollars for the ballpark? Where are we on the Beach Street extension, the landscaping that goes all the way to Main Street? Uh, where are we at the opioid money that, uh, the courts won and the county is dispersing it? Uh, where's our money? Uh, Main Street, the redoing of Main Street, we were going to redo Main Street so that it looked like Beach Street? Where are we on that project? Um, parks, uh, the city manager wanted to locate new parks. There's several locations on the beach side for parks and he also mentioned six hundred acres that we have out west. Uh, where are we on that? Um, the second pier, there was talk about a second pier. Where are we there? Um, we talked about Basin Avenue, um, Signor Frogs, uh, opening up next to the Main Street Pier. Where are we at that, at that one? Um, where are we at affordable housing? The mayor had mentioned there were sixteen thousand affordable housing units needed. City of Daytona Beach needed a thousand six hundred of them. How many have we already? I thought, I thought you said ten percent for our, our city. Um, where are we at that? How many have we produced? I know that, uh, there's a project out on Williamson. There's a project, several projects that had affordable housing in it that also had affordable housing for seniors. So, how many have actually been built? How many are planned? How are we on target to meet the, the portion that we need to do as a city? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Vetta and on deck is Marjorie Johnson. Is there a Joseph Vetta?
I guess we, we went too long for Joseph.
Marjorie Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach. I'd just like to say, please be courteous of our residents. Do not just be disrespectful. We are paying your salary. And I've seen a lot of disrespect going on here from several of you, Mayor Paul O'Reilly and others. Uh, I'd like to speak tonight about the banquet that happened for the crime. Uh, they had the Speedway, only two commissioners showed up, Monica Paris of Zone One and Ken Strickland. I got a call for my business owner on the beach side and crime is one of the major issues here in Volusia County. And you would think that if the city is paying a thousand dollars for a table and no one, eight tickets and a hundred dollars apiece went to waste. So, I would like to say to you that, uh, you pay your salary and you expect for you to be at these events and you're spending our taxpayer's dollars. And, uh, eight tickets was unaccounted for two commissioners there, Ken Strickland and Monica Paris. That's a disgrace and we don't want that. If you're paying our taxpayer's dollars for these events, we want you to be there representing the citizens of this community. Uh, I've been here on several meetings and spoke about the lighting over at the Live Oak Park. I saw they put a new sign there that we have done nothing and homeless people sleeping on mattresses. This has been going on for several years and, uh, nothing has been done to correct the problem. So, I spoke at the last four meetings about it. You need to get the police over there to monitor that park. You put a sign up there that you need to put lighting. That's what's needed. At that Live Oak Park there, I think it's a disgrace that they're sleeping out there in those mattresses and, uh, the homeless are congregating there. So, that means that it's not being addressed. I spoke about it at the last four meetings. Another young man came up there and spoke about it and nothing has been done about it. So, I want to say to you, city manager, I gotta advocate for you to be the city manager from three o'clock to eleven o'clock. I want that park cleaned out. I want those mattresses removed and I want lighting put in that park. Uh, I'd like to say too that we need a citizen roundtable here in the city of Daytona because our issues are not being addressed. So, city manager, I'd like you to work on that because we have no access to our commissioner, Mayor, or you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say after the last meeting, Commissioner Reed asked for me to travel with her to Live Oak Park. After Ms. Marjorie Johnson's presentation, we did go to Live Oak Park to look at the park. It is very dim and they're individuals. So, we are working to see how we can improve that area. But I just want to put on the record that Commissioner Reed made sure that we rode to that park after the meeting.
So, there's one more thing that Ms. Johnson has advocated for that we're working on. You advocated, we work for it.
Our next speaker is Kiana Hargit and on deck is Susanna Odina.
Gotta have fun.
I've got a quick question for the timer starts. Am I able to say something off record in reference to...
Off record?
Oh, I'm already on. Okay. So, it's September. It's sickle cell awareness month. I know October is cancer awareness month. We don't talk about it enough. So, um, this next Friday, I'm having my Remember the Night banquet. And remember the night, I'm remembering those that have lost their fight in sickle cell, those that are still living. Mayor Henry has come to my, um, event in the past. I'm so late coming to you because of the hurricane. And last year was the hurricane and so I couldn't have it. And I'm having it next Friday. Thank you to Commissioner Reed for the funding that you did give at the, um, building that I resided in. Thank you, Mr. Ned Henry, for opting to give funding. Thank you, Mayor Henry, for opting to give funding. So, I'm asking any other commissioner that can give funding to help this, um, Remember the Night banquet. It's next Friday. I don't know if I'm too late to ask for funding for it, but, um, that's what I'm here for. Now, the next, um, order I want to say with my time, as a small business owner, I feel what you are saying. And in Daytona, it is not easy. I was at a beautiful building and it was sixteen hundred a month. That's why I came to you all so much for funding. I spoke to the owner. He got it down to twelve hundred dollars a month and I was gonna pay out of my own pocket budgeting my rent and paying rent for that building. It's so needed. But then he told the chicken place that replaced churches next to me that they can have it for storage space. So, he's telling me one thing and then telling another business another. So, it's a challenge when we don't own the space and we have to abide by the rules of the owner. So, my question to you all is, what does, um, does it take for the owner? When they come and say they're having a building there, they don't have to give you stipulations to what their building is for? Because it's making it hard for us when we're trying to go according to the policies, according to the zoning, um, rules and regulations. But then they can say and do what they want to do as the owner of the building. Oh, okay. So, that was just a question I wanted to ask in reference to that. So, I'm not long-winded, but that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to share my flyer with you all. Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina and on deck is Frederick Brown.
I'm Stu Odina. I live at seven one six North Wild Olive. Thank you very much. Uh, many years ago, I don't know if you remember or not, but I gave you a packet of, um, suggestions that we could do to make our, our area more fun. One of the pictures was of a drainpipe that was painted like a giraffe. Do you remember?
Mm-hmm.
I gave that to several other people as well. The suggestion was that we could get Home Depot. They bought in on it. We could get Ace Hardware. They bought in on it. I didn't talk to Lowe's. They were gonna donate paint for that. We could have a contest with the children in the schools in their art classes with, uh, colleges. So, it would basically be for free. Uh, in Deland, they charge three hundred dollars to put your picture in one of their murals. We could do that as well. And they only allow people from Deland to be in those murals.
That's a great idea.
Okay. Uh, City of New Smyrna Beach took that suggestion and they now have cutesy sharks all over their town. I, I often tell people, we don't have sharks in Daytona. We send them down to New Smyrna. So, it's appropriate. But, uh, those are just things that we could do for free with donations and would make it more fun. And I would like to see those done over on the beach. I know we do have some dolphins and we used to have some paintings, uh, around. But just little things that, that our young people could be involved in and make it a more fun place. Thank you.
Thank you.
And look up that packet. If you can't find it, I'm sure it's in my computer. I can bring you another one.
Now, Ms. O'Hara can't find it. I'm not gonna tell you that.
You let's try to send it to the clerk and she'll send it out.
Yeah.
Send it to the clerk.
I'm gonna have to reissue that one, I think.
You think?
Yeah.
I ain't gonna lie, I can find it though.
Still gotta get used to this new bench here. Uh, Frederick Brown, fifteen oh eight Preston Ridge, Daytona Beach, the most fantastic city in Volusia County. Um, I have a lot of thanks here. You know, I was listening to all the comments and, and of course, these seats are still terrible. So, I had to do a lot of it out there. Um, for us elderly people, they're tough to sit in all night. But, uh, Commissioner May, thank you for bringing up the trails. This is something I've been wanting to see connected. Uh, not only the Back Carriage, but also the Sweetheart Trail. And it's not even accurately depicted on our website. That's the shame. We could fix that up really, really easily, but we need a task staff to do that. Um, Ken, right on, right on the mark. We are shooting our, Daytona is shooting, we're shooting ourself in the foot trying to get businesses going here. I strongly support Mr. Kendrick's efforts. I am definitely not a fan of Mr. Podre. I could tell you a whole lot more, but you can do your own research. I'm very concerned about his presence here in our town. But Mr. Kendrick's project, I think, is great. It's a shame. It's an opportunity for small businesses. After, and thank you, Derek and Derek, for clarifying some of the problems. I'm glad to see you're supporting it, but it's unfortunate that we can't find a path. I still hope we can. Um, by the way, some of the comments, and I'm probably gonna run out of time, time, because I got three, you probably didn't listen too much to what Marjorie Johnson said at the very end of her statement. Citizens Workshop was what she talked about. I think that's a great, because there's a lot of times that, you know, three minutes, we can't tell everything we'd like to say. And I like to have more of a one-on-one. I had a great conversation with Mr. Fiecher a while back, but that was a long time ago. I'd like to update that and cover some other things and, and subjects. I'd like to see it on a regular basis, a regularly scheduled basis where we can interact back and forth, uh, with, with you, um, and, and cover things like how can we help small businesses happen instead of figuring out ways to, to, to stonewall it from regulations. And, and it's a shame because Daytona needs these kind of businesses. Um, books, uh, I can't say enough about that program. Books are what made Dr. Ben Carson, Dr. Ben Carson, instead of just a street thug. And if you're not familiar with the movie, please watch Gifted Hands. It talks about how books changed his life. It's, I can't say enough how positive that is. Some of the other comments that I wanted to talk about, obviously I don't have enough time. Um, I, and, and some of this is gonna go way over your head, but I am trying to speak to the future of Daytona. I think we need to have a city power co-op. I'll be glad, again, at a city, uh, citizens' meeting to discuss that in detail so you understand it. Florida Power has been an absolutely horrible partner with the city. Uh, two ten, or, I'm sorry, uh, two thousand and ten South Peninsula, I'd like to see that put on a park commitment list. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Cynthia Slater and on deck is Emily Nice. Is Ms. Slater still here? Okay. Our next speaker is Emily Nice and on deck is Steve Miller.
My north Leander. First of all, thank you so much, Commissioner Cantu, for your outstanding leadership on the TPO. Um, I have seen you in action and it's impressive. Um, thank you for addressing the condition of the Seabreeze and Oak Ridge Bridges. Are very important visible infrastructure. The many different northern Daytona Beach neighborhoods, both beachside and mainland, will no doubt benefit in safety, beauty, and the reputation of our city. Scientific evidence shows that buildings and structures can affect our mood and well-being. Specialized cells in the hippocampal region of our brains are attuned to the geometry, arrangement, and appearances of the spaces we inhabit. The aesthetic improvements sought by Commissioner Cantu will no doubt show visitors, residents, and businesses that our city leaders care about the well-being, minds, emotions, and feelings of safety in our visitors, investors, business, and residences. And by the way, as you all remember from school, I'm sure Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the five pillars, um, other than the bottom one, basic one being food and clothing and shelter, the next one up is safety. So, when we have structures that are well taken care of, that speaks to safety. That speaks to the job that you're doing to take care of our city, to welcome our visitors, to encourage our residents, that good things are happening, that you all are investing in our structures. And it's important because after all, with code enforcement, if you expect us to keep our houses clean and painted, then probably no difference for the bridges, right? So, hopefully, um, that will come to fruition as residents have been asking about this for years. Also, I've spoken, um, this past year to Seabreeze businesses and they also are interested in cleaning up Seabreeze and the beach side as you, Mr. Mayor, have taken such great lengths to bring that forward. If you drive on Seabreeze compared to the other bridges, you think you're in a different city. Um, and also, the LED lighting will help with the very necessary lighting under the bridges that even the police have confirmed that it's very dark, it's problematic, and it could use some lighting. So, thank you, Public Works. Thank you, DBPD, and thank you, Commissioner, and all of you for caring so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker this evening is Steve Miller.
Steve Miller, three eighty-three Walnut Street. I've been a businessman in Daytona Beach for forty years, uh, in the midtown redevelopment area. And for the last forty years, I've seen the community that I live in have relatively regrets. We've had zoning issues that affect us ever since I've been in this city. And in our community, uh, of course, we know that even our residents were in a bowl. So, when it flood, the folks flood out. They almost have to start over every year. We have approximately two percent business people in midtown redevelopment. We are in an area that our revenue from our business communities very, very little. Um, and we need help. And one of the things that we really need is to rehaul our zoning. See, zoning has been an issue for people of color ever since the end of Civil War. Uh, our neighborhoods have been, uh, beat down. It's always the worst parts of most communities. Even if you look at Daytona Beach, uh, you look at Daytona, it's a beautiful city, but midtown, which is supposed to be the heart of the city, I think sometimes we are the, really the bright side of Daytona Beach. And all we want is people to care about us. Uh, and I thank you guys for, for looking out for, uh, Mr. Kendrick this evening. Uh, he's a young black business owner who invested a lot of money in, in our community. And of course, I realize that the landlord is giving him all kind of hard ways and, and you guys have bent over backwards. But we truly need help with the zoning laws and we really would love to see it changed, uh, abolished. It doesn't work for us. You know, right after, uh, uh, slavery ended, they created new laws. Uh, I'm quite sure some of them were zoning, but some of them was like, uh, if you don't have a job, we're gonna lock you up. And right after slavery, and we have been subjected to all types of problems and stuff. And, uh, in our neighborhood, our income, ninety-five percent of it is gone. And, uh, in our neighborhood, our income, ninety-five percent of it is gone after three hours after we get it. Five percent is left, and three percent of the five percent, we give to people who have businesses in our neighborhood, but they don't live in our neighborhood. Only two percent is left. You can't survive with two percent. You are not a community, you're only a neighborhood. And a neighborhood is where people go to sleep. It's not where they go to work, because we have to leave our neighborhood to go and find meaningful employment, our children. And when they finish school, they have to almost leave here. And I'd just like to see us a little bit more, uh, business-friendly. And it's amazing that tonight, we actually, actually celebrated the, uh, Black Business Month. And Black Business Month, so, gentlemen, we really love to see your help, because we love to see you guys help us advertise for our small businesses in the neighborhood, which is only a few. But thank you very much.
Thank you. That the last speaker?
Congratulations, grandpa.
All right. Oh, good night, Daytona Beach.